Good evening. This 90th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members, due to us being in a virtual meeting, please note you will be recognized. Before I say you have to prove, once I recognize you, you may begin talking. Tonight's invocation will be delivered by Rabbi Mintz of Beni Israel congregation. Following that, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Rabbi.
Thank you so much, Council President Scott. Friends, let us pray. Master of the universe, Reb'ano Shalom. Bless the members of this holy and distinguished council of the city of Baltimore. Guide them and our council presidents to lead with inspiration, with vision, and with courage. Dower them with the wisdom and wherewithal to properly and effectively steward our city, especially during this most challenging of times. Oh God, we understand that when you created the world, you did so in partnership with all of us and all of humanity. As you declared, Nasa Adam, let us together make humankind. And when we respond to that call today and every day, we affirm that we act as your partner in the fixing and bettering of society. Dear Lord, we you entrusted these distinguished council members with the additional task of leadership, with a special role in this sacred partnership. Grant these sacred partners the fortitude to lead with purpose and open their hearts to lead with compassion. And moreover, open all our hearts and the hearts of all the residents of this city to care for the widow and the orphan and the stranger, to fight for justice and liberty, their noble, and enable all those in our city to be materially and spiritually fulfilled. Bless us to fulfill the words of Isaiah, learn to be good, seek justice, reprove the ruthless, defend the orphan, plead the widow. Let us see that no one is left without food or water, that no one is left alone without companionship, and that each and every one of our children has access to substantive educational resources and learning. During this most challenging health crisis, we can come out of this with a society and city that is truly devastated and a people in despair, or we can come together as a family, community, and a city that has worked together to help one another and has emerged stronger. Reb'ano Shalom, master of the universe, we turn to you to shine a light upon this council so they can lead with vision and help us see through the darkness. Reb'ano Shalom, master of the universe, we turn to you to guide this council to lead us through the narrow bridge to a place of expansiveness. As the famous Rabbenevitim states, "The whole world is a very narrow bridge." Kol ha'olam geishar tsar me'od bha'itar lo lefaket kau. But the main thing is to have no fear at all. And lastly, Reb'ano Shalom, master of the universe, we turn to you to offer the blessings from our sacred Torah to our leaders. Yivarecha adonai viyishmaracha. May God bless you and guard you. Ya'er adonai pana ve'ilacha yisineka. May God shine His confidence upon you and be gracious to you. Yisah ha'hem pana ve'ilacha ve'yasem l'cha shalom. May God lift His face upon you and give you peace. And let us say amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great. Roll call. The press with all the global members. President.
Councilman Cohen.
Present.
Councilwoman McCray.
Present.
Councilman Dorsey.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Councilman Schleifer.
Present.
Vice President Middleton.
Present.
Councilman Pinkett.
Present.
Councilman Burnett.
Present.
Councilman Bullock.
Present.
Councilman Reisinger.
Present.
Councilman Costello.
Present.
Councilman Stokes.
Present.
Councilwoman Sneed.
Here.
Councilwoman Clark.
Here.
Mr. President, we have four on.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the July 27 and the August 6, 2020 proceedings have been emailed to council members' inboxes.
Well, by the text in the journal, will be adopted. The journal is adopted. A bill signed by the mayor can be found on page 2 and 3 of the agenda. Bill to be introduced.
City Council Bill 20-0573, Franchise Electric Vehicle Charging Stations. For the purpose of granting a franchise to the Baltimore Gas and Electric Company to install, operate, and maintain electric vehicle charging stations on city right-of-way and park properties, subject to certain terms, conditions, and reservations, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0574, City Streets Opening a 13-Foot Alley. For the purpose of condemning and opening a 13-foot alley extending from East Biddle Street, northernly 80 feet, to a 20-foot alley laid out in the rear of the properties known as 2000 through 2030 East Biddle Street, as shown on plaque 314-B-16 in the office of the Department of Transportation, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0575, City Streets Closing a 13-Foot Alley and a 20-Foot Alley. For the purpose of condemning and closing a 13-foot alley extending from East Biddle Street, northernly 80 feet, to a 20-foot alley and a 20-foot alley extending from North Washington Street, easterly 241 and 1/2 feet, more or less, laid out in the rear of the properties known as 2000 to 2030 East Biddle Street, as shown on plaque 314-B-16A in the office of the Department of Transportation, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0576, Sale of Property, Former Beds of a 13-Foot Alley and a 20-Foot Alley. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain parcels of land known as the former bed of a 13-foot alley extending from East Biddle Street, northernly 80 feet, to a 20-foot alley and the former bed of a 20-foot alley extending from North Washington Street, easterly 241 and 1/2 feet, more or less, laid out in the rear of the properties known as 2000 through 2030 East Biddle Street, and no longer needed for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0577, City Streets Opening a 10-Foot Alley. For the purpose of condemning and opening a 10-foot alley bounded by Edding Street, a variable width alley, West Lafayette Avenue, and West Landville Street, as shown on plaque 326-A-32 in the office of the Department of Transportation, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0578, City Streets Closing 10-Foot Alley. For the purpose of condemning and closing a 10-foot alley bounded by Edding Street, a variable width alley, West Lafayette Avenue, and West Landville Street, as shown on plaque 326-A-32A in the office of the Department of Transportation, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0579, City Streets Closing 10-Foot Alley. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in a certain parcel of land known as the former bed of a 10-foot alley bounded by Edding Street, a variable width alley, West Lafayette Avenue, and West Landville Street, and no longer needed for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
Hold on just a second, Mr. President. I believe that title is incorrect. That would be 20-0579, Sale of Property, Former Bed of a 10-Foot Alley, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0580, City Streets Closing a Portion of South Boston Street Extending from South Haven Street. For the purpose of condemning and closing a variable width portion of South Boston Street extending from South Haven Street, westerly 723.6 feet, more or less, as shown on plaque 349-A-43A in the office of the Department of Transportation, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0581, Sale of Property, A Portion of South Boston Street Extending from South Haven Street. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in a certain parcel of land known as a variable width portion of Boston Street extending from South Haven Street, westerly 723.6 feet, more or less, and no longer needed for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0582, City Streets Closing Portion of Boston Street. For the purpose of condemning and closing a variable width portion of Boston Street from the point 723.6 feet westerly from the west side of South Haven Street and extending westerly 524 feet, more or less, to the east side of South Conquering Street, 60 feet wide, as shown on plaque 349-A-44A in the office of the Department of Transportation, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0583, Sale of Property, Variable Width Portion of Boston Street. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in a certain parcel of land known as a variable width portion of Boston Street from a point 723.6 feet westerly from the west side of South Haven Street and extending westerly 524 feet, more or less, to the east side of South Conquering Street, 60 feet wide, and no longer needed for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0584, Commission on Sustainability Officers. For the purpose of allowing the appointment of co-chairs for the Commission of Sustainability. Sponsor, President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to Judiciary Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0585, Sale of Property, Lake Clifton Senior High School Number 40. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain property known as the former Lake Clifton Senior High School Number 40, located at 2801 St. Lowe Drive, and no longer needed for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President, on behalf of the administration.
This is been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0586, Sale of Property, Lake Clifton Gatehouse. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in a certain property known as the former Lake Clifton Gatehouse, located at 2803 St. Lowe Drive, and no longer needed for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0587, Perkins Somerset Old Town Development District. For the purpose of designating a development district to be known as the Perkins Somerset Old Town Development District, providing for and determining various matters in connection with the establishment of the development district, creating a special tax increment fund for the development district, allocating certain property taxes to that fund, making certain findings and determinations, providing for a special effective date, and generally providing for matters relating to the designation and the operation of the development district, the establishment and use of the special tax increment fund to provide for the payment by and/or reimbursement to the city for debt service which the city is obligated to pay or has paid on any special obligation bonds and/or notes issued by the city, the authorization of a pledge by the city, subject to appropriation of the tax increment revenues pursuant to a contribution agreement, to provide for the payment by the state issuer of the principal of and interest on the applicable state obligations issued in connection with the development district and other related costs, the replenishment of any reserve fund established for any bonds or state obligations, and the payment of certain expenses and administrative costs related to the operation of the development district. Sponsor, President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0588, Perkins Somerset Old Town Bond Issuance. For the purpose of authorizing the issuance of special obligation bonds and the pledge subject to appropriation of tax increment revenues and special tax revenues to the payment of debt service thereon, authorizing the pledge by the city subject to appropriation of the tax increment revenues and special tax revenues pursuant to a contribution agreement to provide for the payment by the state issuer of the principal of and interest on the applicable state obligations and other related costs, providing that such bonds or state obligations may be issued from time to time and in one or more issues or series in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $105 million for the purpose of financing infrastructure improvements and related costs, including without limitation the project and other necessary improvements to, from, or within the development district, and certain other infrastructure improvements committed by the X, writing for the method and sources of payment with such special obligation bonds, authorizing the Board of Finance to specify, prescribe, determine, provide for, and approve the details, forms, documents, and all procedures in connection with such special obligation bonds, and any other matters necessary or desirable in connection with the authorization, issuance, sale, and payment of such special obligation bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery by the city of a contribution agreement with respect to state obligations, authorizing the Board of Finance to specify, prescribe, determine, provide for, and approve the method and sources of such pledge, the details, forms, documents, or procedures in connection with such pledge, and any other matters necessary or desirable in connection with such pledge, writing for a special effective date, providing that the city is in each fiscal year in which any such bonds are outstanding, use its best efforts to obtain the appropriation of the tax increment revenues and the special tax revenues in the amounts and at the same, excuse me, in active times specified in a trust agreement or agreements between the city and a bank or trust company appointed as trustee thereunder, or in one or more contribution agreements, and generally relating to the issuance and payments of special obligation bonds or such pledge of the tax increment revenues and the special tax revenues subject to appropriation pursuant to a contribution agreement to the payment of debt service on state obligations and other related costs. Sponsor, President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0589, Perkins Somerset Old Town Taxing District. For the purpose of designating a special taxing district to be known as the Perkins Somerset Old Town Special Taxing District, providing for and determining various matters in connection with the establishment of the special taxing district, creating a special fund for the special taxing district, providing for the levy of a special tax on all taxable real and personal property located in the special taxing district, providing for a special effective date, and generally providing for matters relating to the designation and operation of the special taxing district, the establishment and use of the special fund to provide for the payment by or reimbursement to the city for debt service which the city is obligated to pay or has paid on any special obligation bonds or notes issued by the city, the authorization of the pledge pursuant, excuse me, of the pledge subject to appropriation or the special tax revenues pursuant to a contribution agreement, to provide for the payment by the state issuer of the principal of and interest on the applicable state obligations issued in connection with the special taxing district and other related costs, the replenishment of any reserve fund established for any bonds or state obligations, and the payment of certain expenses and administrative costs related to the operation of the special taxing district. Sponsor, President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0590, Zoning Conditional Use Parking Lot, 1301 to 1323 Edding Street, 505, 507, 509, 511 West Lafayette Avenue, and the alley adjacent to 1325 Edding Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a parking lot on the properties known as 1301 to 1325 Edding Street and the alley adjacent, excuse me, Edding Street, 505, 507, 509, and 511 West Lafayette Avenue, and the alley adjacent to 1325 Edding Street, as outlined and read in the accompanying plaque. Sponsor, Costello.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a conversion, or not a conversion, this is a conditional use by ordinance for a parking lot for a property purchased by a church. They've been retaining it for the past 20-plus years. This has the support of both community associations. I look forward to a hearing. Thank you, Mr. President.
This has been assigned to the Land use Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0591, Zoning Conditional Use Parking Lots, 115 and 118 Mount Clair Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of parking lots on the properties known as 115 Mount Clair Street and 118 Mount Clair Street, as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque. Sponsor, Bullock.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Oh yes, thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is related to a project that's going on in the community that has received support. Again, it's the conversion, essentially, of an industrial building that's now going to have some multiple purposes, and the parking lot needed for a ingress and ingress into the facility. So again, appreciate your support. Thank you so much.
This has been assigned to the Land use Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0592, Office to End Homelessness. Establishment, Administration, and Permanent Housing Voucher Program. For the purpose of establishing the Baltimore City Office to End Homelessness, declaring that the policy of the mayor and city council of Baltimore to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring, providing that the office will be led by an executive director appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council, establishing the duties of the office, requiring certain reports, establishing the permanent housing voucher program, writing for certain funding for the permanent housing voucher program, setting forth the eligibility requirements for the permanent housing voucher program, requiring that the office adopt rules and regulations to administer the permanent housing voucher program, establishing procedures on a family's admission into the permanent housing voucher program, setting forth certain problematic functions for the permanent housing voucher program through tenant-based vouchers and project-based vouchers, providing for the termination of assistance under the permanent housing voucher program for certain enumerated reasons, providing for hearings for certain terminations and denials of assistance, establishing certain hearing procedures and the conduct of the hearings, repealing City Code Article 1, subtitle 24, Overnight Shelters as Depreciated, defining certain terms, generally relating to ending homelessness in Baltimore, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors, Dorsey, Henry, Middleton, Bullock, Clark.
Please add Councilman Reisinger as a co-sponsor, Councilman Cohen as a co-sponsor, Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilwoman McCray. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Oh, sorry, Councilman, Councilman Burnett as a co-sponsor.
Thank you to all of my co-sponsors on this bill. Many thanks are in order to the folks that I've worked with for many months to bring this bill together, the Homeless Persons' Representation Project, Housing Our Neighbors, Healthcare for the Homeless, and others. Very simply, Baltimore does not have a permanent office established to addressing the ongoing homelessness that exists in Baltimore City. We have a mayor's office of homeless services now. We have had offices on homeless services under different agencies in the past, but there has, over time, been no continuity in where such an office exists within our city government, or the permanence of our approach to ending homelessness, or even the level of commitment that we make to the reality, the potential to eliminate and homelessness in Baltimore City. And so, very simply, this bill creates that place permanently with directorship that is more accountable than the current situation, where the director would have to, like other city agencies, be confirmed by this body, by the city council, after being nominated by the mayor's office, by the mayor, not simply being a direct mayor or appointee. This bill establishes certain basic parameters for the operation of this office, requiring that it do things simply like working with known best practices, and outlines certain other expectations for working with community and advocacy-based organizations and partners in the interest of meeting the mission of the office and the goal of ending homelessness. And along the way, establishes a locally-funded housing voucher program specifically to assist in transitioning from permanent supportive housing into independent housing for people at or below the 30% area median income, considered very low income, some of whom will still have zero rent, and we will not require any minimum rent payments from those tenants who have no income, unlike certain other programs that despite people having literally zero income, we still charge them a minimum rent in order to help have a roof over their head. And this is, this is an important part of addressing the overall challenge we face of housing insecurity, where so many in the middle and lower-middle class may be one paycheck away from declining, from falling into homelessness and deeper housing insecurity. And we know that the creation of new affordable housing at a certain affordability level may help to address that drop of certain families and individuals into homelessness. Once we have people in homelessness, there's also, in the other direction, not a clear pathway out. This program assists people who will move from homelessness into permanent supportive housing programs, where they have housing and other supportive services provided to them, and in many ways, then, over time, are able to have aspects of their lives stabilized and become more capable of more independent living, and have a place to transition into this voucher program, whereas presently, no stepping stone really exists. So this is an important part of adding to the portfolio of opportunities that we're able to provide to make housing more available and affordable to people in Baltimore City. And I'm thankful for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and all of the work that has gone into establishing it and getting it funded. No small thanks due to Councilman Bullock. Thank you so much for your leadership on that. And all of those who have given their time on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Commission, who, along with the Housing Department and Commissioner Braverman, have identified the funding of rent supplement as a critical priority funding from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and one of a nature that is intent on increasing year over year in order to continue to grow our ability to put a roof over people's heads. So I thank you all for your co-sponsorship on this bill, and I thank you Council President Scott for speaking at our press conference earlier today, and I look forward to a hearing on this and getting this done before the end of this term. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you for your leadership. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0593, Tax Sales Properties Exempt from Sale. For the purpose of directing the Director of Finance to withhold certain properties from tax sale, defining certain terms, requiring that the Director of Finance adopt regulations to implement the requirements of this section, requiring that the Director of Finance submit an annual report to the mayor and city council, and generally implementing an annual report to the mayor and city council and generally implementing the authority provided by Section fourteen dash eight one one F of the state tax property article. Sponsor McCray, President Scott, Dorsey, Middleton, Bullock, Clark.
Thank you. Please add Councilman Pinkett as a co-sponsor. Councilman Cohen as a co-sponsor. Councilman Stokes, Councilwoman Sneed as a co-sponsor. Uh, Councilman Burnett as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilwoman, oh, Councilman Reisinger. Chair recognizes Councilman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for my colleagues who co-sponsored this important legislation. This legislation will allow the Director of Finance to withhold homeowners who are low income, homeowners who are at least sixty-five years old, or homeowners who are disabled from tax sale. Baltimore households are under heightened financial strain, um, due to COVID- nineteen, and it is important to me that we use every tool that we have to protect our most vulnerable residents. Along with the pandemic that we're going through, we also know Baltimore's history of housing segregation, like redlining and blockbusting, and how it has contributed to racial wealth disparity. And we know that home ownership is the primary means of building intergenerational wealth. African-American seniors are disproportionately affected by tax sales along with low income and disabled homeowners. Um, and it, again, I cannot stress this enough. It is very important to me that we protect our most vulnerable residents. I want to thank my colleagues again, um, who co-sponsored this bill. And last, I also want to thank Delegate Ann Kaiser who sponsored the enabling legislation on a state level. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. I thank, thank you for your leadership. We know, uh, how this process, the tax sale process, uh, disproportionately affects, uh, residents in Baltimore, black and brown, our seniors, when we're talking about undoing and looking through a lens of equity, undoing, uh, policies of the past that have helped to create this environment. It starts the example of that, so I look forward to working with you on this thing. Uh, this has been assigned to the Tax, Business, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five nine four Rezoning Twenty-four Twenty-Six Pennsylvania Avenue. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as twenty-four twenty-six Pennsylvania Avenue, is outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, from the R, from the OR dash one slash RNU zoning district to the C one E zoning district. Sponsor Pinkett.
Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the twenty-four twenty-six Pennsylvania Avenue is the historic arts social club. Uh, this rezoning, uh, brings, uh, this property and this organization into more of the alignment, uh, commercial alignment for, um, the arts and entertainment district and the revitalization of Pennsylvania Avenue, and facilitates the much necessary improvements that need to happen to the space on the exterior, uh, to market the entire district, but also to bring prominence to that particular location. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five nine five Rezoning Eleven oh three to eleven oh nine North Washington Street. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as eleven oh three to eleven oh nine North Washington Street, is outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, from the R eight zoning district to the IMU one zoning district. Sponsor Sneed.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Council President. Um, there was a mix-up when transform happened. This has always been, it was never residential. It's always been, um, a furniture store or a furniture repurposing, um, place. And so, um, I just want to make sure that we, um, get it back to, um, the place where furniture can be restored. The funny fact about this is that, um, some benches and desks have actually been restored from City Hall at this location. Um, and so when he sent over the email, um, he talked about how his father owned the place and that it has never been residential, and he showed pictures of some of the desks and furniture that was restored from City Hall. So, uh, thank you for your support and just a little bit of history in Baltimore City.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee. Resolutions to be entered.
City Council Resolution twenty dash zero two four two R Informational Hearing Maryland Transit Administration's Pandemic Response in the Upcoming School Year. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Maryland Transit Administration, the Baltimore City Department of Transportation, and the Baltimore City Public School System to provide the city council with information regarding the Maryland Transit Administration's response to the pandemic and plans for the upcoming school year. Sponsors Pinkett, Henry, Bullock.
Please add Councilman Burnett, Councilman Dorsey, Council Vice President Milton, Councilwoman McCray, Councilwoman Clark, uh, uh, Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor, Councilman Reisinger as a co-sponsor, Council President, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilman Cohen as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. President. On July twenty-second, Chairman Cohen hosted a, um, hearing for the Educational Committee on our school system's preparedness, uh, for the upcoming school year. And, um, in the midst of a lot of discoveries on, um, what, uh, our school system's going to look like, um, as we approach virtual learning and, um, learning under this current COVID- nineteen, uh, condition that we have, um, we also discovered the lack of preparation around transportation. Um, even if we were able to get the schools ready for our students, um, there is still a tremendous barrier, um, with our public transportation. And so, uh, this, uh, hearing is an opportunity for us to bring MTA before the council to make certain that, um, our transportation needs for our young people are met. Um, even if we weren't in the midst of a pandemic, we know the struggles that our young people face on a daily to get back and forth to school. Um, and those, uh, troubles are even heightened under our current conditions. And so we want to make certain that all our partners are ready, um, so that we can provide the best atmosphere for our children when they do return to school. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, this has been assigned to the Transportation Committee.
City Council Resolution twenty dash zero two four three R Defending the Baltimore Clean Air Act. For the purpose of requesting that the mayor's office and the law department drop all settlement negotiations and rigorously and zealously defend the Baltimore Clean Air Act in the city's appeal before the Fourth Circuit, and requesting further that the mayor's office not consider any new contract that calls for incinerating the state's trash, and that the mayor's office enter into a good faith dialogue with zero waste advocates to reaffirm the path forward outlining, outlined in Baltimore's Fair Development Plan for Zero Waste that does not rely on incinerating city waste after twenty twenty-one. Sponsors Reisinger, Clark, Burnett, Henry, Middleton.
Please add Councilman Pinkett as a co-sponsor, Councilwoman Sneed as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger. Councilman, you're still muted. You're good now.
Okay. Mr. President and members of the city council, the purpose of this resolution is for the mayor and the law departments to drop all settlements, negotiations with Willabrader. The question is why? Mr. Mayor, you're instructing the law department to sit at the table and negotiate a deal with Willabrader. Mr. Mayor, the Clean Air Act was adopted with the support from the health department. Also, GeoSentec, when April fifteenth, two thousand twenty, did a report for the Baltimore City Department of Public Works, the Solid Waste Management Ma- Master Plan, states that Willabrader compliance with the Clean Air Act would cost the city ninety-five million dollars, and that the city's taxpayers would foot the bill. My colleagues and Mr. President, no deal that involves a new contract for the city to burn trash at Willabrader makes any financial, health, or environmental sense. Also, Mr. Mayor, the law department defended the Clean Air Act, the law department's advice letter that was sent to the city council, January twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, which describes Willabrader's legal arguments as demestratically false. Mr. Mayor, if the city doesn't extend their contract with Willabrader, there are local companies in the city of Baltimore that have proposals to bridge the solid waste and recycle. So, let me end by saying, Mr. Mayor, we, we request you end negotiations and let our law department appeal. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman Clark, do you want to make any remarks?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to say. We are appealing the turn down of Baltimore Clean Air Act. We then were, suffered a sixty-day delay in us getting to court because the law department decided to sit down and negotiate with Willabrader. My colleague has made it very clear that there is nothing to negotiate. In twenty twenty-one, no matter what else happens, our city contract with Willabrader ends. Anything that suggests extending it will cost us money, but most of all, will make us lose our chance for zero waste where we recycle, reuse, and enter the twenty-first century here in Baltimore in terms of trash and debris. So, thank you to my colleague for his leadership. I'm happy to be part of the team.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Um, Mr. President, um, I move this resolution for media adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
That was a I. Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCray.
Councilwoman McCray. We'll come back. Councilwoman Dorsey.
Yes.
Uh, we have the A for McCray. Dorsey?
Yay.
Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer?
Yes.
Vice President Middleton?
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett?
Yeah.
Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Reisinger?
Yes.
Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sneed?
Yes.
Councilwoman?
Yes.
Fifteen yeses, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to suspend the appropriate rules to introduce a resolution from the floor.
Mr. President, I have to read the, the bill.
You can read it before it's introduced, before you suspend the rule.
Thank you, sir. You're right. Go ahead.
Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer. Go ahead.
Um, so, I just want to, uh, suspend the appropriate rules to introduce a resolution from the floor. The resolution is in, uh, my fellow members' mailboxes.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended.
City Council Resolution twenty dash zero two four four R Explosion on Labyrinth Road. For the purpose of mourning the lives lost in the explosion on Labyrinth Road, wishing for the swift recovery of the other individuals injured in the explosion on Labyrinth Road, recognizing the bravery of the responders to the explosion, thanking those who assisted in coordination efforts in response to the explosion, and calling for the continuation of the public investigation regarding the explosion, any briefing on the investigation's findings once the investigation has concluded. Sponsors President Scott, Councilman Schleifer, Bullock, Henry, McCray, Clark.
Thank you. Please add Council Vice President Middleton, Councilman Pinkett as co-sponsors, uh, Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilman Reisinger as a co-sponsor, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Cohen as co-sponsors, Councilman Dorsey as a co-sponsor. Uh, thank you. Thank you, everyone. I want to just take a moment, you guys. And, and a week ago today, the councilman, myself, the mayor, uh, members of the Florida Post delegation were out on scene at something that you would never expect to see in, in a city. I want to thank every single neighbor, everybody from our first of starters, every law enforcement, every business owner, every community, religious leader who has stepped up, and really to the entire city of Baltimore for putting their arms around those, that, that entire community. Uh, this is something that will forever, uh, be stuck in the memories and will shape our future. We lost two great residents, uh, Lonnie Heroe, uh, who was loved by her, her neighbors, Joseph Graham, a bright student on his way to changing the world. But through this tragedy, uh, we proved once again to the world that Baltimore loves hard, and we love each other very hard. We care for our neighbors and we stand by each other, no questions asked. And you look at the love and, and the attention that the neighbors and the city has given to the families impacted, it really shows you the true promise of what we can be in this, as a city each and every day. And as we continue, uh, on the road to recovery from this tragedy, I ask that everyone continues to do that. Continue to give those affected, that neighborhoods, the families, and the thoughts and prayers continue to be with them as they proceed through something that nobody can even imagine what they're going through. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer. You have further remarks.
We took, uh, a lot of, a lot of the words out of my mouth, and so, you know, I look forward to having this, this hearing where we can go through, uh, once, uh, there is some more information available from the investigation, for that to be reported to the council, and for us to also take the opportunity, uh, to really look at, um, everything that occurred, uh, during this week, uh, thank the appropriate people. Um, I do have to, one thing I would add to what you said, and you did take a lot of the words out of my mouth, uh, is that, you know, this was really a great, um, a, a great thing to see that, uh, with our lowest lows, that, you know, the city really came together, the residents, nonprofits, but also, uh, the city agencies. And so, uh, you know, this was a great, there was a great coordination between all agencies involved, uh, really everybody working together to try to, um, to clean up the site and, uh, and bring some healing to the community. And, uh, there's still a long road ahead, uh, to rebuilding the community, but, um, I'm confident that with the path that we're on currently, with everybody really working together, um, that we will, we will get to that place. And so, I would also like to ask, uh, that a, we have a moment of silence at the end of the council meeting, uh, for, for both, um, both people who passed away, um, and, uh, you know, if everybody can just, you know, join me in keeping those families and their thoughts and prayers, as well as those who are still in the hospital recovering. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee.
May I have those names again of the two?
Uh, Councilwoman, I will text them to you.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, wait, are we, I thought we were supposed to, we weren't going to read the...
You have to, you have to suspend the rules before.
Oh, okay. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, my apologies, to, uh, suspend the rules to introduce the resolution.
It's okay. We, we know that Kalen, you and Kalen didn't go to this par, off-the-par high school like I did, so it's to be expected. Uh, uh, without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Mr. Young?
City Council Resolution twenty dash zero two four five R The United States Postal Service and Voting. For the purpose of calling on Congress to pass the Delivering for America Act and expressing concern about Maryland's current voting plan. Sponsors President Scott, Burnett.
Please add Councilwoman Clark as a co-sponsor, Councilman Reisinger, Councilman Pinkett as a co-sponsor, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor, Councilman Henry, Councilman Bullock as co-sponsors, Council Vice President Middleton as a co-sponsor, Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Dorsey as co-sponsors. Uh, thank you, everyone. We, everyone knows what's happening right now. We have a, uh, individual occupying the White House who is waging an all-out assault, not just on the United States Postal Service, but Americans' basic right to vote. And we also are knowing that here in Maryland, we have a, a governor who, despite the issues that we had during our primary election, we had a record turnout because we mailed everyone a ballot, and knowing of the issues that with the postal service... with the postal service, and knowing that the president is directly trying to undermine, uh, this election process, uh, the governor is refusing to follow the advice of the Board of Elections, all of the election officials, and just mailing out ballots, and also forcing us to, uh, uh, push people out to voting places where we know it's not healthy and safe. We also need a contingency plan if the president is able to succeed in some of the things they're trying to do with the postal service. So, this resolution is about two things, uh, recognizing how important it is for Congress to act to stop, uh, the insanity, uh, of the degradation of American rights that the president is doing, but also calling on our governor to criticize all the partisan politics, all the partisan talking points, and do what we all know is right, mail everyone a ballot, and actually have a contingency plan for this election so that, uh, everybody in Baltimore City and the state of Maryland can actually, uh, use that basic American right to vote. Thank you. Uh, Chair recognizes Counselor Burnett. Uh, Chair recognizes Counselor Costello. Are you good, Counselor?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I want to do the motion after Councilman Burnett. Thank you.
Uh, Chair recognizes Counselor Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I second, um, everything that you've said so far, and had the actual opportunity today to join our, our federal delegation, uh, state delegation, uh, colleagues from the council, um, labor activists, community activists at the main post office today, all calling, uh, for action from Congress to address this very serious concern. And, um, I'm, I'm thankful, uh, for your leadership in introducing this and standing for support.
Uh, you're making a motion to Council?
Oh, I'd like to move for immediate adoption.
All right. Uh, without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Roll call.
President Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer?
Yes.
Vice President Middleton?
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett?
Yes.
Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger?
Yes.
Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sneed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
I would like to just say, as I give my yes vote, that this weekend I got caught up in a mailbox disappearance in my district. And I learned a lot from that disappearance, which is, there's no notice given, and people get upset, and I was upset, to see that a mailbox that was there at nine AM in the Abel community had disappeared by midnight, by noon, and no one knew where it was. So, people began calling congressional offices, the post office, and never could get an answer. Like, where's our mailbox? We want it back. Well, to make a long story short, we're getting it back. We're getting it back because it was removed on purpose for some minor construction, and it's being brought back, although we still haven't got that confirmed by the post office. But what I want to say about it is this. I saw this whole community gather up to fight to get a mailbox back. And I think that's, and we are going to get it back, in Outman, Montana, the community was able to reverse the taking away of mailboxes and make it stop. Community action matters in this post office fight. And we have got to save it, to save our own lives here in the whole United States of America. I vote yes, and thank you for the, thanks for the resolution.
Fifteen yes votes, Mr. President.
Thank you. The ayes have it. This resolution has been adopted. Uh, the consent calendar can be found in Section Eight of the agenda. Chair recognizes Counselor Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we read short titles on second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, uh, short titles will be read for the remainder of the meeting. Short titles will be read for the remainder of the meeting. Uh, I know Mr. Young is excited about that, especially today. Committee reports. We will now move the bills on second reading. Uh, Executive Appointments Committee.
EA Twenty dash Zero Two Seven Seven, Melody Hahn Hedgera, Member, Ethics Board, District Eleven.
Chair recognizes Counselor Stokes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on August the twelfth, twenty. I move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor approving this nomination, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. This nomination is approved.
EA Twenty dash Zero Two Seven Eight, Levi S. Vaslau, Member, Civilian Review Board, District Five.
Chair recognizes Counselor Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor approving this nomination, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. This nomination is approved. Our Health Committee.
City Council Resolution Twenty dash Zero Two Three One R, Informational Hearing, Bring Back Victory Gardens.
Chair recognizes Counselor Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on August fifth, twenty twenty, and I would like to move the resolution favorable.
All those in favor approving this resolution, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. This resolution is approved. Housing, Urban, and Parks Committee.
City Council Bill, right back. And Councilman Bullock as well. City Council Bill Eighteen dash Zero Two Zero Two, Repeal of Madison Park North, the urban renewal area and plan.
Chair recognizes Counselor Bullock.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. President. So, the Housing, Urban, and Parks Committee held hearings on July twenty-eighth and August eleventh, and we're reporting out, uh, seven bills. The first bill you just mentioned, I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill Nineteen dash Zero Four Two Nine, Vacant Structures, Posting Owner Information.
Chair recognizes Counselor Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, there are amendments in your boxes, and I move the amendments.
All those in favor approving amendments, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Amendments are approved. Chair recognizes Counselor Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amendment.
All those in favor approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill Twenty dash Zero Five Three Eight, City Streets Closing Two Portions of East Cromwell Street.
Chair recognizes Counselor Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion is approved. Uh, Chair recognizes Counselor Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the appropriate rules to move a bill from second to third reader on the same evening.
Uh, without objection, oh, actually, uh, roll call.
President Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray?
Yeah.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer?
Yes.
Vice President Middleton?
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett?
Yes.
Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger?
Yes.
Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sneed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Fifteen ayes.
The ayes have it. This bill moves to third reader today.
City Council Resolution Nineteen dash Zero One Seven Three R, Approval for the Exchange of a Class BD seven license for use at six oh four South Exeter Street to a Class A seven license for use at seven eleven South Central Avenue.
Chair recognizes Counselor Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. After the hearing on this resolution, the Law Department suggested a technical amendment to confirm the recital to change in state law. This is the only one of four resolutions that will require an amendment. The amendment is in your boxes. I move the amendment.
All those in favor approving the amendment, say aye.
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 All, all opposed, say nay. Amendments are approved. Chair recognizes Counselor Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the resolution favorable as amendment.
All those in favor approving this resolution, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. This resolution is approved.
Uh, Council, there you go. City Council Resolution Twenty dash Zero Two Three Three R, Approval for the Exchange of a Class BD seven license to a Class A seven license, thirteen hundred to thirteen oh two Lawrence Street.
Chair recognizes Counselor Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the resolution favorable.
All those in favor approving this resolution, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This resolution is approved.
City Council Resolution Twenty dash Zero Two Three Four R, Approval for the Exchange of a Class BD seven license to a Class A seven license in seventeen forty-one West North Avenue.
Chair recognizes Counselor Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the resolution favorable.
All those in favor approving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This resolution is approved.
City Council Resolution Twenty dash Zero Two Three Five R, Approval for the Exchange of a Class BD seven license to a Class A seven license, ten forty-one Greenmount Avenue.
Chair recognizes Counselor Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the resolution favorable.
All those in favor approving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion is approved. This resolution is approved. Judiciary Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty dash Zero Five Four Nine, Corrected City Streets, Renaming Violet Hill Light Way to Violet Hill Light Way.
Chair recognizes Counselor Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. The confusion here is that the, um, lady who this is named after, who is the first black female police officer in Baltimore City, her last name is spelled W-H-Y-T-E. Uh, unfortunately, in some places, it's spelled W-H-I-T-E, so we just wanted to make sure we get this one correct. Um, anyway, I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill Twenty dash Zero Five Four Six, Natural Resources, Forest, and Tree Conservation.
Chair recognizes Counselor Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we had a very lengthy hearing on this bill. There are a number of amendments on my colleague's desk. First, I would like to thank all of the committee members, uh, Mayor Young's Government Relations Team, and your legislative team, uh, Mr. President, as we work through all of those amendments. Uh, with that, I, uh, will move the-
Yes, the Councilman, uh, actually, uh, before you move the amendment, one of our colleagues asked to speak on, uh, before you move the amendments. Chair recognizes Counselor Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and I understand that there was quite a lengthy hearing on this bill. Um, I was approached by a number of people with concern about one of the amendments in particular, and, um, I just wanted to voice my, you know, summary view on it. Um, one of these amendments exempts, um, the Department of Recreation-
Mr. President, a point of order, Counselor Dorsey, I sincerely apologize for interrupting. Mr. President, if it, if it would please you, I can move the amendments as two packages, all the amendments we agreed to, and then the one amendment within question, or I can defer back to, to Counselor Dorsey.
Yeah, just let the Councilman finish and then we'll move on.
My apologies, Counselor Dorsey.
Counselor Dorsey.
For the record, I would not object to that approach, uh, separating out this one amendment. I think it's probably worthwhile for the purpose of discussing it. Um, but I'll come back to what I was saying, is that this one amendment, um, exempts the Department of Recreation and Parks from having to, um, replant trees, uh, or plant trees, um, as part of a kind of redevelopment of the restoration of athletic fields. And while this is, uh, not an uncommon carve-out in other similar legislation, in other jurisdictions and certain practices, um, I just think it's really important for us to be leaders, and I think it's really important for us to recognize all the ways in which, um, climate change, uh, occurs and impacts us. Um, fields, open fields have little, um, retention of water, little, little value, and in the basic restoration of fields, um, they're not gaining any stormwater retention or filtration benefits. Um, and the process in and of itself, and so we should all, always be looking for opportunities to, uh, to better address stormwater. Um, and at the same time, the process in and of itself of doing the rest, uh, the, the restoration of a field, uh, the transporting of goods to and from that location, from where they, for wherever they may be procured, the excavation of that site, the use of heavy machinery involved in that work, um, all of that has a carbon impact to it, and I think it's really important for us to, uh, understand that when, when a restoration project, uh, like that occurs, um, it's not just about a one-to-one replacement and making things good again so that they can continue on being used, but that there's a process and there's an impact to that. And the planting of trees is an important part of, um, offsetting all that, uh, all of the carbon footprint that we create in essentially all of our activities. And so, it seems not unreasonable that we should account for that in some way and not exempt this, um, or at least not wholly exempt it. Um, a wholesale exemption just seems like we're not doing at least a little bit of what we could be doing to, uh, better address climate change and our impact and our causation. So, thank you. I, so I would, I'm going to be voting against that amendment, and I would ask that that amendment please be moved as a separate amendment, and I would hope that others would move, uh, would, would vote against this specific amendment.
Uh, Chair recognizes Counselor Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just wanted to get a clarification. Was this, um, does this amendment exempt Wren and Parks from having to do any replanting when they take trees down, or does it lower the amount of replanting they have to do, um, relative to what it's requiring for others? And I'm not sure who that question is for.
Mr. Chair, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just emailed, uh, our colleagues, as well as yourself, Mr. President, and the legislative team from your office, and the government relations team from the mayor's office, uh, those amendments. Uh, Councilman Henry, if you go to, um, page two in what I just sent, uh, this is under the Planning Department, um, this is amendment number five, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, can you ask your, so that being said, can you please ask your question again, uh, Councilman?
Sorry about that. I had to, I'm switching back and forth between being able to control my microphone and reading the amendment. So, this, this amendment says renovation of an existing athletic field, athletic court, or playground that does not include- or playground that does not include the cutting or clearing of existing forests or specimen trees? Oh, okay. I, okay, I, I under, now I understand what Councilman Dorsey was saying when he says that even when we're doing renovation without cutting down trees, there's still a carbon impact and there should be some type of, uh, remediation meant to that. I, okay, I, I, I follow the, the logic of the concern now.
Mr. President, um, if...
Good. Councilman Castello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I bifurcate the, this one issue amendment and move the initial package amendments?
Yes, one second. Let, uh, let me recognize Councilwoman Clark first. Councilwoman, you don't need Councilwoman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're good now.
I voted against this in committee, and, um, I talked to, this morning, to, um, some of the people in, in forestry as well as Wreckin' Parks in general about how I thought it should be, it should not be there because parks and wreck is basically taking themselves out of what everyone in this big bill is asking us to do. So, I, I don't want to get in way of process here, but I would appreciate consideration of going back to them and saying, hey, guys, do what everybody else is going to have to do in the agencies and in the private sector. Plant trees in, in existing athletic fields and you can't do it in a athletic court like a tennis court, but you could also do it in playgrounds and help us meet the, the goals that this whole bill is trying desperately to establish. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Castello, uh, so you're going to separate, separate out, uh, how are you going to do that? Because are you just taking that line eleven and making it its own, or you're going that whole amendment five and making it its own?
So, Mr. President, uh, what I'd do is move all of the amendments in this package with the exception of the entirety of Planning Amendment Number Five, uh, which is the amendment which Councilmembers Dorsey, Henry, and Clark respectively just spoke to.
Uh, Councilman, uh, the only issue I have with that is that amendment also includes, uh, uh, for the purpose of constructing a dwelling house intended for the use of owner or child or grandchild to own, if the activity does not. So, by doing that, erasing that whole amendment, you also will not require those individuals to do it as well.
Okay. Uh, would your preference be, well, let's, let's move the original package and then let's bifurcate out Amendment Five. Would you be okay with that, Mr. President?
Yes, and, and just for line, uh, for number eleven, uh, number ten should stay in. Uh, we should just remove, uh, that, uh, number eleven from the amendment and, and make a motion to move that. Chair recognizes Councilman Castello.
Point of order, Mr. Council President.
Uh, yes, Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
My reading of this amendment is actually that eve, if we were to omit Amendment Five entirely, it would not affect that language to which you're referring, uh, after the number ten, because that is all existing language in the bill, and all that omitting this amendment would do would, would deny the addition of the language after the number eleven.
Mr. President?
Chair recognizes Councilman Castello.
Yeah, I, I think I agree with Councilman Dorsey's interpretation. Um, can I go back to my previous request to move all of the amendments with the exception of the entirety of Amendment Number Five, and then we can come back and further bifurcate that?
Yes. All in favor of approving, uh, you can, the motion, Mr. Castello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. President, I move that we adopt all of the amendments, uh, in the package with the exception of Planning Department Amendment Number Five in its entirety.
All those in favor of approving those amendments say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Those amendments are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Castello.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I think there's two ways we can do Amendment Number Five. Uh, we can, um, move the amendment as a whole and see if that passes, and if that doesn't pass, we could come back and move the first portion of Amendment Number Five. Would that be an acceptable, uh, path forward?
Point of information.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
I, 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 I fear I'm repeating what's already been said, but I'm, all I see in Amendment Number Five is the new language of semicolon four and then the language of eleven, and everything else is just what's already in the bill. So, I'm unclear on what the first part of this amendment is, because the first part just references where the second part goes.
Yep. We, we, uh, Councilman, you can move the amendment in its entirety.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move Planning Department Amendment Number Five in the attached package.
Roll call.
President Scott.
No.
Councilman Cohen.
No.
Councilwoman McCray.
No.
Councilman Dorsey.
No.
Councilman Henry.
I'd just like to explain my vote so briefly. Uh, I'm also voting no, but I, I want to be clear, I understand that the concern of Wreckin' Parks is that this will cost them more money when they're trying to do, uh, renovations of playgrounds and courts and other things that don't involve taking down trees. Um, my attitude towards that, and I hope the attitude of, of most of the colleagues is we should be appropriating more money to Wreckin' Parks to begin with, and if one of the things that they do with that is plant more trees, then that's western recreation and parks. So, I don't know.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I'll just say that it doesn't really impact my district all that much, since as you all know, Wreckin' Parks doesn't really do much in my district, uh, but I will vote no.
Vice President Middleton.
No.
Councilman Pinkett.
I'd like to explain my vote. So, um, this, uh, voting, um, no against this amendment, um, does not necessarily lead to the planting of any additional trees, um, in the city. Uh, Wreckin' Parks has already tasked with, uh, this type of planning throughout the city, and without the subsequent resources, um, in addition to Wreckin' Parks, what they will do is they will just take the resources that they've already been allocated and direct them to this particular task. Um, what we are seeking from Wreckin' Parks is for them to plant more trees, um, which means that when budget time comes, we need to make certain that they have the necessary resources to do what they are already doing. They are not opposed to planting trees, they are just opposed to planting them in this way. So, I vote yes for this amendment.
Councilman Burnett. Councilman Bullock.
I'd like to quickly explain my vote as well. I would say as a member of the committee, uh, after some of the points that Councilman Pinkett made, again, laws just comes back down to a resource issue, so, uh, we do need to buy more resources in the budget for Wreckin' Parks, but I am voting no on this amendment.
Councilman Reisiger.
No.
Councilman Castello.
Councilman Pinkett took the words out of my mouth. I'd vote yes.
Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
We got ten thousand million emails from people all over the city, and at least they lived in the city on this one, a lot of them, begging us to adopt this bill and save the world, which in many ways it does, by creating a decent, uh, cover of trees across the city, which we do not have at this time. I talked to Wreckin' Parks, I voted against it in committee, I'm happy to see the way this is going, but I think that they can do this without breaking the bank at Wreckin' Parks. I think they've got trees, and they, they, and they have to live across the city, God bless them, but the people who supported this desperately and wrote their emails, they wanted the real thing, and without Wreckin' Parks, they don't have it. I vote no. Thank you.
Four yes votes, eleven no votes, Mr. President.
This amendment fails. Chair recognizes Councilman Castello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reading. Labor Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four five two, employee-owned businesses, reporting.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes, the Labor Committee held a hearing last week on August the thirteenth, um, the sponsor was Councilmember Bill Henry. Um, the committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments. Uh, the amendments were sent to councilmembers electronically. I move the committee amendment favorable.
All those in favor of approving this amendment say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. Amendments are approved. Chair recogni, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
I move the bill favorable with amendments.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reading. Land Use Committee.
There we go. City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four two seven, rezoning ten twenty West Pratt Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisiger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
With final objection, the findings of fact will be adopted. Findings of fact are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisiger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
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 All opposed say nay.
Motion is approved. This bill moves to third reading. Uh, third reading requiring the invocation of City Council Rule Dash One for same day advancement, second and third reading.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five three eight, city streets closing two portions of East Cromwell Street.
Can I read through, Mr. Reading?
Thank you, sir. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisiger, Castello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This is the first. Third reading for final passage.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five zero seven, rezoning seventeen twenty Frederick Avenue. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisiger, Castello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This is the first.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five two nine, property tax, interim closure and sale vacant and abandoned property. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisiger, Castello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five three six, minority and women's business program interim extension. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisiger, Castello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements, uh, when you hear your committee, uh, please, uh, start with your announcement. We will start today, uh, at the bottom of the list. Transportation Committee, Councilman Dorsey.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, I've been saying the last couple of council meetings that if I didn't get some information from the Transportation Department, that I'd be holding a hearing, uh, oversight, uh, on the matter of, um, process and approvals for, um, for traffic calming, and I'm happy to say that I got some information from them last Friday, and I feel like we are actually on the way to having an actual policy in place. So, uh, no hearing on that for now. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee, Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I have several, so bear with me. Uh, the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear City Council Bill two zero dash zero five five two on Thursday, August twenty seventh, twenty twenty, at ten AM, uh, virtually. It's the, um, historic, it's the tax credit for historical properties. Next, I'd like to request permission to suspend the rules, uh, ten dash one and ten dash two to announce a hearing.
With final objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you. The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear, uh, City Council Bill two zero dash oh five nine three on Thursday, August twenty seventh, twenty twenty, at ten oh one AM, uh, virtually.
Council Vice President?
And that's the...
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, and that's the tax, uh, tax sale for properties exempt from sale, which was introduced today.
Hey, Council Vice President, uh, we, we got a note that you had, make sure for this one and the first one, go back and read, make sure you read the bill number as well.
Okay. You want me to go back?
Yes, ma'am.
Bill number...
Notes from Parliamentary.
Okay. I thought I, okay, sorry. Bill number two zero dash zero five five two, Thursday, August twenty seventh, at ten AM, and that's, again, Bill Number two oh dash zero five five two, the tax credit historical, uh, properties. And the second one was the one that we, that I requested permission to suspend the rules, and that was Bill Number two zero dash oh five nine three, that will be heard on Thursday, August twenty seventh, twenty twenty, at ten oh one AM, and that's the tax, uh, tax sale property exempt from sale. And also, um, Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development will hear Bill Number nineteen dash oh four three five on Thursday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty, at ten AM, uh, and that will be done virtually, and that is the sale of property air rights over a portion of the public right of way of the two hundred block of North Broadway. And Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee, um, will hear Bill Number two zero dash oh five zero zero, that will also be heard on Thursday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty, at ten oh one AM, and that is the sale of property, two three-foot alleys bounded by Tyson Street, Wilson Alley, Park Avenue, and Mulberry Street. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear Bill Number two zero dash oh five eight seven, Thursday, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty, ten AM, uh, virtually, and, uh, that's the Perkin Somerset Old Town Development District. Uh, there are three parts to that, so also Bill Number two zero dash oh five eight eight will be heard on Thursday, the twenty fourth, twenty twenty, at ten oh one AM, virtually, and that's the Perkins Somerset Old Town bond issue, um, issuance. And the last one on that date is, um, Bill Number two zero dash oh five eight nine, and that's the Perkin Somerset Tax District will also, again, be heard on Thursday, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty, at ten oh two AM, and that covers it. Yeah, um, oh, is, was that for me?
Yes.
Chair recognizes Councilman Castello.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the, um, for the Somerset Tiff District, uh, the last one that was read, I believe it requires a suspension of rules ten to ten three.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I'd like to suspend the rules ten one, ten two.
Ten, ten three only, Councilwoman. Just ten two and ten three. Just ten two and ten three.
Ten two and ten three. I'd like to spend, suspend the rules to have a hearing.
If I object, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
And that is the Perkins, uh, Somerset Taxing District, Bill number two zero dash oh five eight nine, Thursday, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty, ten oh two a.m. So all three Somerset bills will be heard together on, uh, the twenty fourth, Thursday the twenty fourth, starting at ten a.m. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Public Safety Committee, Councilman Schleifer.
Yeah, so we have nothing new to report. We do, um, I will just say that we have another hearing coming up on Wednesday at four fifteen for towing, licensing, and regulations, as well as the monthly crime stats for the police department.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Land Use Committee, Councilman Raffigan.
Uh, Mr. President, I move to suspend rules ten dash two and ten dash three to announce a hearing.
If I object, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Raffigan.
The Land Use Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, September the sixteenth, at one p.m. on Bill twenty dash zero five nine zero, zoning conditionally used parking lot at thirteen zero one through thirteen twenty five, Edding Street, five oh five, five oh seven, five oh nine, and five eleven West Lafayette Avenue, and the alley adjacent to thirteen twenty five Edding Street. Uh, the Land Use Committee will also hold a hearing on Wednesday, September the thirtieth, at one p.m. on Bill twenty dash zero five seven one. This is a paying unit development at the Village of Cross Keys. Uh, both these hearings will be conducted as a WebEx virtual hearing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Legislative Investigations, Councilman Burnett.
I don't have anything for that committee, but I do have health, if you want me to jump in there.
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, on, uh, Tuesday, September twenty ninth, twenty twenty, at ten a.m., the committee will hear, uh, Resolution Number twenty dash zero one eight eight R, informational hearing, syringe service expansion. And, uh, I'd also like to announce a work session on Tuesday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty, at eleven thirty a.m. for Council Bill Number twenty dash zero four nine five. This will be a virtual meeting, uh, for testified control and regulation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Labor Committee, Councilman Missney.
Thank you. The Labor Committee will, um, actually have a hearing on Thursday, September the seventeenth, at one p.m. in reference to COVID-nineteen employee retention. Um, it's for the purpose of acquiring certain successor business employers, uh, taking control over certain businesses from the incumbent business employers to retain certain employees. Um, and the other one will be, the Labor Committee will hear, uh, twenty dash zero five four four, Thursday, September the seventeenth, at one oh one p.m., um, in reference to COVID-nineteen laid-off employee right of recall for the purpose of requiring certain employers to recall certain employees who have been laid off after, um, after COVID-nineteen state of emergency. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Judiciary Committee, Councilman Costello.
Mr. President, I move to suspend rules ten two and ten three to announce a hearing.
If I object, the rules will be suspended. Rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Judiciary Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, September eighth, at ten a.m. This will be a virtual WebEx hearing. Council of twenty dash zero five eight four, Commission on Sustainability Officers at request of the administration. The judiciary will also hold a hearing on Tuesday, September eighth, at ten oh five a.m. This will be a WebEx virtual meeting. This is on Bill Number twenty dash zero five five seven, Baltimore City Administrative Procedure Act Regulations at the request of Councilmembers Snead and Dorsey. Mr. President, may I jump to Budget and Appropriations Committee?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget Appropriations Committee will hold the hearing on Thursday, October fifteenth, at two p.m. This will be a WebEx virtual hearing on Council Resolution seventeen dash zero 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 three R, Quarterly Budget Briefings, uh, for BBMR. Uh, Budget Appropriations Committee will also hold a hearing on Thursday, October fifteenth, at two fifteen p.m. This will be a WebEx virtual hearing on Council Resolution seventeen dash zero 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 four R, Budget Oversight Hearings for Baltimore City Public Schools. These last two hearings, Mr. President, are fiscal year twenty twenty, uh, closeouts, uh, including, including quarter four, um, for fiscal year twenty twenty. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Housing and Urban Affairs Committee, Councilman Bullock.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Would like to announce, uh, five, uh, Housing and Urban Affairs Committee hearings, um, the first, uh, being, uh, they're all on September fifteenth, twenty twenty. So, and first at two p.m. will be, uh, City Council Bill nineteen zero four three three, Ornnan City Streets Opening, Air Rights of a Portion of the Public Right-of-Way at the two hundred block of North Broadway. That will then be followed at two oh five p.m. for City Council Bill nineteen zero four three four, Ornnan City Streets Closing, Air Rights of a Portion of the Right-of-Way at the two hundred block of North Broadway. Beadily following that, at two ten p.m. will be City Council Bill two zero zero four nine eight, uh, City Streets Opening, Two Three-Foot Alleys Bounder by Tyson Street, Wilson Alley, Park Avenue, and Mulberry Street. Then at two fifteen p.m. will be having City Council Bill two zero zero four nine nine, Ornnan City Streets Closing, Inlow Alley and Two Three-Foot Alleys Bounder by Tyson Street, Wilson Alley, Park Avenue, and Mulberry Street. And then lastly, at two thirty p.m., I'm announcing a legislative oversight hearing regarding trash collection. So, we want to have an informational hearing on the status of trash collection and recycling in Baltimore. We know that there have been some challenges in the last, uh, a few weeks, a month, so definitely want to get some more answers about that. And so that's all for now, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you very much, Mr. Counselor. Uh, next, we will have the Executive Appointments Committee, Councilman Stokes.
Mr. President, I have no notes.
Thank you. Equity and Structure, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Thursday, September tenth, at twelve oh one p.m., the Equity and Structure Committee will need to hear Bill Number nineteen dash zero three five three, Charter Amendment, Underground Conduit System, Sale, Transfer, or Franchise Prohibited. Uh, this will be a WebEx hearing, as will be the following two. Uh, also, on Thursday, September tenth, twenty twenty, at twelve oh two p.m., Equity and Structure will hear twenty dash zero five five one, Charter Amendment, City Council Modernization and Restructuring Act. And then at twelve oh three p.m., still on Thursday, September tenth, we will hear Bill twenty dash zero five five one, Charter Amendment for Women's. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Mr. President, isn't there a deadline for charter amendments to be passed in order to legally make it on the ballot?
They were, we are past that deadline, Mr. Councilmember. These are the administration bills that they put in knowing, and they may let the chair know that they were not expecting them to be on the ballot this time.
And, so, to be-
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Oh, thank you. I, um, to, to be more complete, one of two things can happen. One is, we will have a hearing on these charter amendments so that they can have a public discussion, uh, whether the administration would like to move forward and pass them. What we have been told by the Law Department is, anything that we pass after the deadline to have it put on the ballot, uh, this November, anything we pass amid a sign by the mayor will then automatically be on the ballot at the next general election in November of twenty twenty-two. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Education and Youth Committee, Councilman Fowey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education and Youth Committee will hold a virtual WebEx Legislative Oversight Hearing on Wednesday, August twenty-sixth, at five p.m., um, for the purpose of calling on representatives from the Baltimore City School System and other stakeholders, including representatives from Comcast and other internet service providers to discuss plans for internet access to the twenty twenty-one year, school year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you all. Uh, regular announcements. Uh, Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President, sorry. Um, I got notifications that I just want to go back to one of the hearings. Um, when I said suspend the rules, I said ten one and ten two, and I don't want that to be a problem. So I want to go back to, um, Bill Number twenty dash oh five nine three, and request permission to suspend the rules ten two and ten three to announce a hearing.
Council Vice President, can you read the bill title as well?
Yes. Um, it's, the, uh, Tax Sale Property Exempt From Sale, the bill that was just introduced. I would like to request permission to, um, announce a hearing and suspend the rules ten two and ten three.
If I object, the rules will be suspended.
Thank you, and again, again, that bill-
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, that bill will be heard on Thursday, August twenty-seventh, uh, at ten oh one a.m., virtually. And it's the Tax Sale Property Exempt From Sale. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, regular announcements, uh, no, Councilman Henry. Chair recognizes, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, apparently, I misread one of my hearing announcements and read the same bill number twice. Um, I need to be clear that at, on Thursday, September tenth, at twelve oh two p.m., the Equity and Structure Committee will hear Bill twenty dash zero five five zero, Charter Amendment, City Council Modernization and Restructure. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor. Regular announcements. I would start by first asking that the Council Vice President honor a moment of silence for the now two hundred and eight of victims of, um, of violence, gun violence that we have in Baltimore City this year, uh, way too many lives lost, even those, uh, who are now being injured in non-fatal shootings since we last met. We even had a thirteen-year-old, uh, shot in a non-fatal shooting. We know that we have to start to think about building a better plan, and better actions around public safety in Baltimore. I look forward to discussing that with you all over the next coming month. I would also ask for a moment of silence for my dear friend Joseph Kitchen, uh, President of Young Democrats of Maryland, who I know, uh, was friends with many of our colleagues there. You have never met a more kind soul than Joseph, someone who was a public servant, a great friend, who, although he was from French Georgia County, whenever we asked him to come to support Baltimore, he was there, helping us to understand that we all have to work and operate together across, uh, jurisdictional lines, but also across boundaries that you didn't think were even possible to be bridged years ago. And, uh, we're gonna, he's gonna be severely missed, deeply missed by his family, his community, his friends, all that loved him, but we will never forget, and his legacy will cry out yawn, and all of us who knew him and knew his service and what he wanted to see from all of us. And that was for us to be our best selves, and for us to be our best group collectively. So please honor a moment of silence for him as well. Uh, regular announcements. I will start with the folks who I can see on my screen, uh, Councilman Missney. No, Councilman Bullock.
Uh, nothing here, Mr. President.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to ask, uh, Madam Vice President, uh, to honor a moment of silence, uh, for Ed Oliver Jr., uh, the unofficial mayor of South Baltimore, who recently passed away. Thank you, Madam Vice President, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Pinkett.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask, uh, Madam Vice President if, uh, she would add to the list, uh, two individuals for a moment of silence. The first, uh, Mr. Bill Lee, longtime Reservoir Hill resident, um, advocate not only for the community, but for the city. Um, some might call him an urban pioneer. Um, there's so many people who live in Reservoir Hill because of the advocacy, because of the sense of community that he and others, um, established. So, the first is Bill Lee. The second is, uh, Ms. Mamie Connor, a lifetime educator, um, long, longtime, um, teacher at the Union Baptist Head Start. So, she touched, uh, literally hundreds of young people and families who came through, uh, that program needing assistance, um, in family building. So, Mr. Bill Lee and Ms. Mamie Connor. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to also remind our colleagues that, again, to get these into the Council Vice President as early as possible. Uh, Councilman Clark. No, Councilman Stokes.
Uh, Mr. President, I just want to say happy birthday to Ms. Magnolius Johnson on August the nineteenth of twenty twenty. She will turn one hundred and one years old. Thank you.
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, during COVID, uh, arts community in Baltimore has been severely impacted, uh, unable to hold many performances. There are a variety of ways that people are, performances, gallery exhibitions, and many of museums being closed, uh, all kinds of things. There are a variety of ways people have been getting creative, um, some outdoor concerts, uh, different sorts, so, some things that provide opportunity for social distancing. Um, one thing that you all have likely been seeing in your inbox from the Baltimore Office of Promotion in the Arts is a, uh, really wonderful artist pop-up exhibition that has been occurring across the street from the Charles Theater in the open parking lot there for now three Sundays, and will continue, continue for two more Sundays, uh, at seventeen oh six North Charles Street. This is, uh, from one p.m. to three p.m. Um, just a small section of wall is erected in the middle of this parking lot, and they're showing a collection of six or eight pieces or so from one artist each week, uh, in collaboration with, uh, two young black artists and curators, uh, the hot, uh, the, uh, Hot Sauce Artist Collective. And, uh, forgive me if I, there may be other members of the Hot Sauce Artist, Artist Collective that I'm not aware of. Um, but it's, uh, but this is a really cool, um, exciting thing. It's an opportunity to get out and see some art in a time when that is just not happening, uh, otherwise. Similarly, there is a window exhibition at the current space, the current gallery, on the, uh, east side of the four hundred block of North Howard Street. Um, there you can see a, a dual show of photographs, um, of activism in Baltimore. Uh, really amazing, large, uh, black and white photographs, I believe it's five or six photographs from five or six different, uh, photographers, uh, as well as a video installation of videos that relate to the Gun Trace Task Force, the Surveillance Plane, and the release of the book, I Got a Monster, um, by Brandon Soderbergh and Baynard Woods. Um, so I encourage everybody to stop by, uh, in Station North on Sunday afternoon and take a minute to cruise down Howard Street, and, uh, stop by and check out the window exhibitions, uh, in the four hundred block of Howard Street at, um, the current space, the current gallery. Um, thank you, Mr. Counsel President.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Bullock? Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry to do this, but I need to go back to committee announcements and do one that was not on Thursday, the twenty-fourth. We will discuss later why we couldn't also do it on Thursday, the tenth. But on Thursday, September twenty-fourth, at twelve noon, the Equity and Structure Committee will hear City Council Bill twenty dash zero two one eight R, Recognizing Systemic Racism as a Public Health Crisis.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, September twenty first, twenty twenty, at five PM virtually, and may we have a moment of silence for Miss Lonnie Harriet and Mr. Joseph Graham from, uh, the, uh, recent explosion, and also, uh, Joseph Kitchen, Ed Oliver Junior, Bill Lee, Mamie Connor, the two hundred and eight victims and their, and homicide and their families, our continued opioid epidemic, our continued COVID pandemic, and may everyone continue to wash their hands, wear their masks, and social distance. We are still in a state of emergency, and that is, uh, extremely important. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no further business, this concludes the ninetieth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council.